Mr. Rattler is going to lead us in the indication of the pledge. Stand please.
All right, let's begin by saying the wonderful weather that we have, Lord. Pray that you can bless this meeting and pray that we make wise decisions for our children this evening and watch over us for the rest of the week. Your name, give me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the US law, in liberty and justice for all.
Hi, the reporter if you call role, please.
Karen Cole.
President.
Vice Karen Harrison. President, Mr. Richard Henderson. Ms. Sally Dale, President. Mr. Matt Wright.
President.
Superintendent Horrell.
President.
Due by the quorum, Mr. Superintendent, if you would lead us through our agenda for tonight.
Sure, well, the first item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes, the regular minutes from June 3rd, 2015. Because everyone knows this is a work session, so we won't be voting on anything tonight, but if there are any questions or concerns about the minutes as of section.
Any discussion on the meeting minutes for June 3rd?
No.
Are there any objections leading that out to our consent agenda for next week's business meeting? Hearing done, we'll carry that over to our consent agenda.
All right, the next item is public comment, Chairman.
Would anybody from the public like to speak?
I would.
Ms. Melton, would you mind stepping forward and stating your name and address, please?
Ms. Melton, 9584 Hana Point Drive, and I have two questions tonight that I'd like to speak about. The first one is the funding that we have for LES, for the new roof and air conditioning unit descriptions. Discussion about two different fundings, one that was $990,000, one that was a million. So if you could straighten those two out and let us know exactly where the status of those funds are, if we have them, if they've been dispersed from the state to us yet, if the state's still holding them, if the county commission's still holding them, whatever the case is. I'm extremely concerned about this roof because I read a report of when the school was under the jurisdiction of Shelby County, that we had a problem with the roof leaking and with mold. And we had an environmental scientist do a study and do an air study on this. I personally am not satisfied after getting all the information and reading the study that everything was investigated and that the mold was investigated thoroughly in the school. And I'm asking for this because I'm concerned about the health and welfare of the students, the staff, and anybody else that goes into the school. I'd really like to see us go ahead and since the funding is allocated to us, go ahead and use them. Not trying to be a smart aleck here, but I believe Mr. Mitchell, I've heard him say, and I've heard a few other people say in here, that the cost of construction goes up. That may or may not be true, it depends on various times, but I'm wondering, what are we losing, what risk are we taking here by waiting, you know, for another year to have a roof put on? What damage are we doing to the school, what damage, how are we putting kids and their health at risk? And how much more is it going to cost a year from now? Labor costs, material costs, etc., that's...
Thank you, Ms. Melton. Was that your second, was that both questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to just sit down?
If you don't mind, is that okay?
That's fine. You're welcome.
If he'll sit down and I can, Superintendent, I'm attending to it. If he has those answers tonight, he will respond tonight. If not, Mr. Superintendent, can you come back to our business meeting and respond as well as I?
Yeah, I'm actually, I can, I can respond to those. I've talked to Ms. Melton.
Great.
Quite a bit about this and provided the information that she's requested. I'd be happy to review that information.
I would like to, I want it on the record if we could, please.
Absolutely.
It was a private conversation and I just want it on the record.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Melton. Are you prepared to speak to that tonight? If not, we'll allow you to speak to it.
Actually, I can, I think I can address the, if there are any that are not addressed, I'd be happy to bring them back to this meeting. And actually, one of these is related to an agenda item tonight.
Okay.
Will be addressed specifically the timing on the new roof. So the way that the funding was set up, and it was $990,000, it has been talked about in terms of a million, and I think probably the link came from the proposal to use the $990,000 for the million dollar land purchase to go toward that. So that's why the two numbers, I think, have sometimes been used interchangeably. The money has been allocated by the county commission, and is being held by Shelby County Schools, and it's set up on a reimbursement basis. So the work has to be, once the invoices have been received from Shelby, by Shelby County Schools, then they turn the money over to pay those invoices. At this point, and this is what the agenda item says, the plan now is to replace the roof and the air conditioning units next summer. This is one of those projects that can't be done while school is in session. There was a two-year window to expend the funds, so it was either going to be this summer or it was going to be next summer. At the time when it would have given us enough time to put an RFP out and get the construction documents to do the roof, there was a lot of uncertainty as to what would be happening at the elementary school. And so, you know, based on the request being denied to use those funds toward the land purchase and then set aside the land purchase money for future roof replacement, then obviously because of the timeline, then we'll replace the roof and the air conditioning units next year. The mold study that was alluded to, there were leak roofs in Lakeland Elementary, as I think has been documented in the press and even talked about at county commission meetings. And there was an environmental study done and that basically found that there were trace amounts of mold in the air, slightly, I guess, and I'm not a mold expert, but I think it's a slightly elevated amount of spores in the air in some of the classrooms where there had been roof leaks. Shelby County Schools, this was before we took over the building, Shelby County Schools did an abatement on the mold issue, they did significant work on the roof leaks, they cleaned up the moldy rooms, and then a follow-up inspection by the same company determined that there were no longer elevated levels of mold in the air. So that was about 14 months ago, I guess it was maybe two, two months.
March and April of 2014.
March and April before we took over the building. So essentially, before we took over the building, we got an all-clear on mold in the classrooms where there had been suspected mold growth. So that's kind of the status of the money, that's the plan for the roof and air conditioning, and that's the clarification on the work that was done in the building to take care of the mold concerns that were there.
One last comment, if I could, please. My issue was the heat and air units were not inspected for mold. That, that's where my problem is. I read the report from the environmental scientists, and there were mold, there was mold found in the vents, but no one took the vents apart and the ceiling tiles apart and checked what was between the roof and that area, and then they also didn't check the condenser units. And so that's why I really got an issue with. And the other thing that I do not know, I don't know, Dr. Horrell, whether we had the air conditioning unit on in April when they came back out and did another air quality test. It doesn't state that in the report, so.
Yeah.
That's another, you know.
And again, the buildings were not in our custody.
I understand, I understand particularly.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Melton.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing done, next item.
Okay, we've got our report section, the chairman's reporting.
I just want to point out a couple things. We have made it through our first official fiscal year as of July 1st, and we are second fiscal year. And I'd like to thank everybody that made it happen. We came in under budget, which a lot of people said wouldn't be possible, but we did, and I'd like to thank Dr. Horrell and his leadership on that. It's been, been a remarkable journey, and it's been, I think we have managed our resources very effectively. The other is, we start school again August 10th. Students come back to class about a month, so we're not far from that. And round two, so to speak, will begin before we know it. As most of you know, the board of commissioners approved our capital plan, so we'll be moving forward with building the middle school. Dr. Horrell and Dr. Mitchell are already working on that, and we look forward to that process and moving forward on that matter as well. But that concludes my report. Mr. Superintendent.
All right, next is the TLM representative update.
Nothing to report.
Next is the ACS board liaison update, which is Ms. Henry. Ms. Henry is chaperoning an instrumental music masterclass in Daytona, so she's with her son and other Arlington High School students, so she cannot be here tonight, but obviously called to check in, to go over the documents, and will be back for the regular board meeting next week, so I'll give her an update when we talk later this week. The superintendent's report, I do have a few things I just want to share for the board and then for the good of the public as well. At this point, in terms of staffing, we have one teacher position that's open at this point. It is a kind of fourth and fifth grade level position. We got a resignation kind of early to mid last week, so we were all hired up for about four hours and then we got that resignation notice. That's what happens in the summer, isn't it, Dr. Mitchell? I'm very pleased to announce several just critical hires. We did hire Jesse Rosales as the accounting analyst, as we would call that position, and she'll be working in Linda's office. She is a certified municipal financial officer and has experience in governmental accounting, and I think is really going to be a huge asset, so I'm very excited about that hire. Amy Phillips, I think, as the board knows, has accepted the position of LEAP coordinator, which is our extended activities program, and she is ready to go, excited, and started working on putting the staff together. And I did want to let you guys know, I'll present a budget, a full budget for the LEAP program. I'll go with an isolated fund, the way the cafeteria budget does, and you guys, I'll have that for you to consider on Monday. I'll have it for you before then, but I believe we can vote on that Monday. And then, I think as everybody knows, Julie Reagan, our assistant principal, who did an awesome job for this year, applied for it and was selected as the principal of Sycamore Elementary School. I'm very excited for Julie, she, she really took on a lot. And I should, at this point, say, all of the administrators at Lakeland Elementary, as you know, and the public should know, take on more, in my opinion, than the administrators at many other, you know, regular schools, because they're also taking on district-level responsibilities and making decisions on that level, and she was no exception. So we're very happy for her, but we're also thrilled to get Sarah Garner, who is coming to us from an assistant principal position at Ellmore Park Mill. She has a lot of experience, she's very well-regarded, and if you saw on the Facebook page, lots of positive comments, and excited about her. So I think, in light of what we're losing, I think we couldn't have done a better job getting a replacement at Lakeland Elementary, so we're looking forward to moving on it. I do want to say, one of the things that's exciting about Ms. Reagan's appointment, because it's central to my philosophy, I guess, as a leader, is I feel like, in terms of cultivating leadership, it's really important that no matter what, we give people the opportunities to grow themselves and better themselves professionally, and sometimes that means people don't stay with you very long, and sometimes that means you put people on other people's radar, because I'm constantly telling everybody how great our staff is and what a great job they do and all the great work they do, and saying at the meetings, and sometimes people think, yeah, maybe I'll take Julie Reagan. Yeah, that's, that's part of the deal. I'd rather have somebody great for a year than somebody that wasn't as great for a long time, so. Best of wishes to Ms. Reagan for sure. Ms. Hughes is working really diligently to prepare information for LEAP, and like I said, we'll present that budget, things are right on our timeline in terms of the state approval, and we can actually expect to receive our letter very soon. They're putting in some information about the facility, and everything is going as planned in terms of the LEAP program. So today, in terms of HR, we have filled five regular teacher positions. We have the one posted. Two of the teachers moved out of town totally. We have one that accepted administrator job in another system. Two now accepted teaching jobs in another system that were closer to home, which certainly understandable. And then we had one spent position that also accepted administrative position. So we had two moves, two promotions, and then two just kind of parallel now. So, you know, again, not, not, not really unusual, but, you know, one thing we've said is I think last year, most people were sitting really tight wherever they were, and I think there was a thought of transferring to last year, some of them were executing on that this year. We're going to get an update from Dr. Mitchell on the contract discussions on the plan. We have had a lot of conversations, and I'll just say, before we even talk, I feel strongly that all the parties are working in good shape towards an agreement, and feel very good about that process, and Dr. Mitchell can elaborate shortly. We've begun the reviews for the end of, I'm kind of shifting into my CFO hat at this point. We've begun the reviews for the end-of-year fiscal process, had an initial meeting with the state accounting supervisor, who indicates she feels like we're in good shape based on what she can see in terms of our preparation of the status of our accounts. This, this first close of the fiscal year will certainly be a learning experience, as will the audit, and looking forward to that, and it would be much eased by the accounting analysts that will be there to help. All right, I can very confidently say now, with the fiscal year having ended, we're starting 2015-16 with, at the very least, an operating reserve of over $450,000. And I know previous numbers, I've kind of hedged that, I said at some point over $200,000, even though I thought it might be higher. That is right now, if you add the anticipated property and sales tax, which are yet to be received, we received some in July and even one of those in August, that will apply towards this year, we will essentially start the 15-16 year with a starting reserve that will be actually closer to $600,000.
Well done, sir.
But what that amounts to, thank you, is a reserve of nearly 8.5% of our first-year budget. And that was definitely one of the stated goals of the system, is to establish a healthy reserve. It was certainly a driving factor in, you know, the efficiencies and the way we manage our fiscal resources. And I will say, I don't expect to add 8.5% of the budget every single year, in fact, it would be unreasonable to do so. But what I'll also say is it's considered very healthy to add a 5% reserve. And in fact, most of the things I've seen say between 5 and 10 is kind of where you want to be, and we pretty much landed right there. So very excited about that. We're in a tremendous financial position, you know, to start, and I'd say our approach paid off, and a lot of that had to do with this board's philosophy on fiscal management and so on, congratulations as well. And I did want to point out, Linda Milhouse, on a day-to-day basis, is the person that is constantly looking for a better deal. No matter what we're buying, or if we get a quote that just seems a bit high, she is terrific about saying, let's try a little harder, and, you know, if you add all those nickels and dimes together, you wind up with $600,000. But thank you for that.
I think that was a big part of you.
She does a great job of all of it. The laptops are being imaged, they're being set up, we've got really some of those exciting technology things that continue to happen, so. Because of some funds that were raised by the school, we have replaced all of the computers in the two computer labs, the IMAX that were there are moving into teacher classrooms, so teachers now have additional high-quality computers. They've moved down all those old bubble, you know, Macs now. So they've got some high-quality computers to use for AR and for student research. The teacher laptops that were used by the teachers are also being reimagined, repurposed for student use. And that is, obviously, with all the iPads and laptops that the PTA, you know, the effort contributed, it's just that the students are really going to walk into a much improved technology position, including the upgraded network, so. Quite a few things there as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any questions for the superintendent of their report?
I have one. Apex teacher, has that person been hired?
That person has been hired, and actually, one of the reasons that it didn't sound like it is because the, what we had was the Apex, one of the Apex teachers shifted into a regular classroom teaching position, and we did hire the Apex teacher. So, yes, she came, she was a teacher from, actually, Garrett's Chapel, who got very highly recommended by Mrs. Hance there, and just continued her Apex certification, and we're really excited.
Any other questions?
Great news on the reserves. Great job.
Next item.
The next item is your item, Mr. Chairman, discussion on superintendent contract discussion.
Well, it seems fitting to have this discussion now. We have cleared our first fiscal year, and I think Dr. Horrell has done an outstanding job fiscally in getting leader of our school system in many, many aspects, and as such, I think it would be in order for this board to extend its contract. The motion that I would like to make to discuss next week at our business meeting would be a two-year extension. State law only allows superintendents to have a four-year contract, and we initially gave them, I think it was a three and a half, and because we're halfway in now, we can go a full two years, which would extend its contract for a four-year period, and also secure, I think, continuity as we transition into the middle school, because it would ensure that Dr. Horrell will be our superintendent at least for that first year into the middle school. But I'd like to open that up for discussion for the board, obviously we can't vote on it tonight, and it won't be a consent item, but it will be on our agenda next week.
I have a quick question, so when will the contract actually come before?
We would, if we voted on it next week, it would be effective July, right, July 1st this year, or July, whatever we need to.
If there's two and a half years left on the contract now, we add two, then we're over the four-year.
But we can resign in January.
Got you.
So his first contract was effective January 1st, or around, might have been, was it January or December?
I would think January.
But January.
It's two years, just not going to be long.
Just because it extends it to full four, full four years, excuse me.
Got you.
Can't go more than that, I'm all.
Okay. Yeah, I have another question.
I will, I will be in the meeting next week, we have a house on scout, so I'll go and spin my opinion before next week. I think Dr. Horrell has done an amazing job of wearing many, many hats. I don't, I don't think I could have asked any more for her first year starting up at Socialist, and we sat for hours here reviewing policies, and he had done significant black work before we ever came to the meetings on anything we were reviewing or researching or getting presentation on. As far as preparedness, he has been an amazing, done an amazing job as far as being prepared for everything, questions that I had, usually he has an answer, if not, then he very quickly, you know, usually, sometimes within five minutes will call me back on the answer, and, you know, and some take time certainly to research and find out the answers. But responsiveness, he's done a great job with reaching out to community members, trying to be just a positive face, a neutral face, to where, you know, right now in the community there's some, some division and things like that, but I think Dr. Horrell has done a great job of being able to, to stay neutral and focus on the children and our school system and the things that are important to make sure education is moving in the right direction as far as the Lakeland school system is concerned. So I will say, I do support extending the contract, I think, I don't, you know, it's kind of one of those things, you certainly want to sign contracts, you know, but, I mean, that certainly, there's competition for these kinds of jobs, and, you know, I certainly support us not losing him because of the fact that he does so many honorable things and continues to improve our school system forward.
Any other discussion?
No.
Hearing done, we'll just carry this item over to our agenda for next week. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on the contract with Southern Educational Strategies. And this was a, this is, this is not posted, but it will be because we received this contract more recently. Essentially, this is something that we've contemplated before, as you know, Dr. Mitchell has been working with us along with Dr. Pike and Dr. Bozeman with Southern Education Strategies. They were retained to consult on the Lakeland Prep project, and Dr. Mitchell actually initiated that it would not be appropriate to continue with the terms of that contract because the scope of the project had changed, and had the potential to change even so significantly. So what I have asked, had asked Dr. Mitchell to consider and submit was a revised contract that would reflect two things, both the scope of the new middle school project and the reduced amount of work that would be part of that, although it's still going to be significant, as I know everybody understands. But I also, as I alluded to earlier, Ms. Melton, asked him to go ahead and write in there specifically that Southern Educational Strategies would also work with us on the research, the RFP, and the actual construction of the new roof and the AC replacement. So both of those projects would be included in this contract, and I did submit to the board in advance. Essentially, the terms are largely the same. The previous contract, I want to point out, was just under $80,000 per year, and the new contract is $48,000 per year, and as before, we pay Dr. Mitchell and his group monthly, and there is a clause where if either party, is what happened last night, feels like it's not appropriate or advantageous, then we would, we would part ways. I want to say again, I've said it so many times publicly, but I feel like this has been a tremendously beneficial partnership for Lakeland school system. Very difficult for me to contemplate that we would have gotten work done, that we have gotten done so far, without Dr. Mitchell and his colleagues and their guidance. I also want to point out that if someone will have to assist me with this work, because I don't have the background to do it, despite all, actually, I've said all of the nice things you guys said, I appreciate the feedback, I would have to have some assistance, and even the thought of if we were to hire somebody full-time that was going to serve as an operations kind of director, which is essentially as they're functioning, in our system, the base salary would most likely be somewhere around 76, just if they were paid like the other kind of specialists, plus benefits would be closer to 99 or 100. So in my mind, you know, for $48,000 flat, we're getting, again, tremendous experience, tremendous support, and a work ethic that's just almost tough to contemplate. So I certainly recommend this contract and continue work with Dr. Mitchell.
Any discussion on this item? I think we need to do it.
I agree. I will be here again next week. I will tell you, I was telling a citizen recently that there, there are so many things that Dr. Mitchell and his team have gone above and beyond to make sure that we were prepared and had the information to make the best decision possible, but also that our school system remained healthy and that we were getting the best deal possible, that in the situation, he's facilitated so many things for us that I don't know anybody with any level of expertise that could replace him and his team. So I certainly 100% support moving forward with him.
Yeah, completely in favor. I'm a big fan of outsourcing anything like this because of cost efficiencies, especially when you can get an expert in the field, plus he's a Lakeland resident, so I think there's a little bit of extra effort to give us that extra special effort, correct, Dr. Mitchell?
Yes.
To make, to make everybody in Lakeland proud, so completely, and I'm happy with the cause.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, any objection to moving this item to our consent agenda? We will move it to our consent. Next item.
Next item is the update from Southern Educational Strategies on the school site purchase, which I will say technically is a freebie because the contract has expired. He's a clean contractor right now, so talk about value add. Still agreed, but it's been working, it's been great.
Thank you very much, you're very kind comments, and I really do appreciate it. Enjoyed working with each of you and work with your superintendent on this project, and as the superintendent said, as you move forward and move into the construction planning for our middle school, the same process, these are in place, but since the scope of the project is smaller, we felt it was appropriate, as we notified you, that we, that might be as appropriate to stay at the previous contract amount. So we'll still be doing the same things, it just won't quite be as big a project, so that, that's the reason for the change, and we feel like it'll be beneficial for everybody. And thank you for your confidence. We, we will continue to work hard and make this a success. And with that being said, I would update you to this point, that good progress is being made in the many, many details that have to be negotiated to effect a sale and purchase contract for the 94th site that you have been working on. The executive committee, along with your attorneys, developed a very good contract and put that on the table for consideration by the property owners and/or reviewed by the company that plans to develop the land around the school. That has been discussed by all the parties involved, and a bit of a delay occurred because one of the attorneys was on family vacation last week, as happens in the summer, but they're back. And, and talking with them the last few days, they're confident that we will be able to bring you a contract for your review and approval before this month is open. That then will allow you to move forward and close on the property. Again, as your chairman knows better than I, all the work that has to be done inside the corporation. That then will allow you to move forward and close on the property. Again, as your chairman knows better than I, all the work that has to be done inside the corporation, the other work that has to be done before you can close. But we're confident that everybody is working towards the same goal, that the contract should be in your hands prior to the end of this month and would be available for you to review hopefully at that time. I want to tell you this is not unusual when you get down to this point. We've been through this many, many times. As you know, I was blessed to have the opportunity to work with more than twenty one new school construction projects. And when you're dealing with a large piece of land, a property owner and a developer that is ready to move forward to develop the land, then it requires the involvement and participation of all of those parties. I was telling your superintendent before the meeting that a very good example of this is what we dealt with when I was superintendent in the Shilling Farms camp. I'm sure you know Shilling Farms, lovely land, developed and carefully planned, as is objective here in Lakeland. And a school, A Mills, who was the first thing to move in. And so we worked very carefully with the property owners and with Ball Investment Company, which was a developer at that time. And it took several months to get everything packed. So I just want you to understand this is not unusual. There's no unexpected delays. But I'm confident that things are moving forward in the positive manner and that assuming there are no unexpected bumps in the road, that before this month is open, we have a contract due to purchase the land and hopefully close on the land. And turn your designers loose to get started because they're on hold right now, but they're ready to go. Final stop. Is there any questions or any other?
I'd like to question or really comment. One of the things that I'm thrilled to hear about, the developers came and spoke at a board meeting, you know, six, seven months ago, whatever it was. They were highly excited about developing around the middle and high school combination. And from the discussions and from your report, it sounds like they're still very much involved. They're still very interested in developing that I think we all agree would be great for Lakeland. From a financial standpoint, from development fee standpoint, from new homes, potentially neighborhood retail, as they said at the time. Now, obviously, I know some of those chain plans could possibly change, but I'm excited to hear that they're still very much involved in the process and looking to develop because that's, that's a big news for Lakeland.
Well, I would just respond and say you're exactly right. And it is hope that the developer will be a part of it when that's an opportunity. In all my years of working with schools and school construction, I have never seen a school or a rescue unit that did not spur significant residential development in and around the middle. It happened here in this community. There was nothing residential around Lakeland Elementary when we started that year. Shilling Farms the same way. So if you want to see what happens, and you already said it, just go look. Because it's, it's not, it's not supposition. It's not vague. I've never seen one that did spur residential development. And so it's good that developers involved and we do want them involved with the Lakeland fire project and the school and from the community. So it's excellent.
A plan project, which is what we all, not just the school, but a plan project for the community. That's sort of the thing.
And that's, that's exactly right. I think that's what I heard.
Well, one of the things I said to Dr. Mitchell earlier that's been, I think, exciting about this, these conversations, very obvious that the developer wants the best school plan and school that they can possibly have. And we have an interest in having the best development, you know, around us.
So that requires the involvement and discussion as we finalize the contract. The contract, of course, will have things that the school system is willing to do and things that your owners willing to do. And that's, those are the details that are being worked on. I feel confident that we're heading tailback in the right direction, hopefully on the timetable that will doubt superintendent to bring you a contract, get it approved, close on the property, let your designers get back to work.
Any further questions for Dr. Mitchell at this point? Here none? Here are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell.
You're welcome.
Next item.
All right, the next item is discussion action on policy one point eight oh one two, the extended school day policy. This is, again, lines up with our preparation to bring our four after school area in house. Essentially, we do not have a policy. What this policy does is we made review. Basically authorizes, the board authorizes superintendent to none of the four after school policy. We've already approved a resolution authorizing me to get one up and running. And this one is just kind of housekeeping that lays some of the parameters for what that program would look like and authorizes me to hire a coordinator and a staff that would be needed to run the program. Because that would be somewhat fluid depending on the number of students that are participating.
This policy is before the board. Any questions or discussion on this policy?
This is based on the TSBA.
Yes, this is another model policy. I did make a few tweaks in terms of the hours that would be offered.
That was my next question, the hours. Does that, do those line up on what they have been previously?
Yes. In fact, I'll just go ahead and say, most of what we're doing lines up, especially to this first year, if not exactly the same, but very closely to the, the, the like here has been provided in terms of these hours, overall structure. What we hear, the more we talk about, the more we excited we get about the opportunities that we believe this is going to be, the opportunities that we believe there are to enhance the program.
And just the votes? Can you expand on some of the possibilities? Because I think a lot of people get confused sometimes when we say, well, it's aftercare, but there's also some other possibilities that we could add in.
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll give you some simple ones. Right now, White Care, just kind of based on the current arrangement and based on, you know, logistics and policies and insurance reasons are limited, basically, to where they can be in the building. Our program, the students would have access to all of the building, including the library, including the computer labs. We believe there'll be extra funding available for technology enhancements that could just be used, well, that would be designed to be used by that group. One of the things we talked to Amy about is just the, the students tend to want to get on computers so they can complete their homework and that's not been an option. That's just simply not been an option. That will absolutely be an option for us. We can have a whole, you know, a computer park that would just include students at White Care. If that's in the budget and if it's, you know, even to get started, they can use the computer lab. And we've also talked about adding on, you know, modules or, you know, pods or kind of short classes that might be four to six weeks where you could have, you could have tennis instruction or ballet or, you know, basketball or whatever kind of extracurricular enhancement that you want. But you might have extra fees that go with that. We've talked about, in fact, we're looking at some foreign language instruction that might be available on a four after school basis. So we think once we get the, the legs under it, there's really a lot of things that we can do.
I think that's the exciting thing about it from a parent's standpoint is if somehow we could offer some of those things and you're not picking them up after White Care and then taking them to a lesson, you know, a violin lesson or, you know, whatever it has to be. And that's done when you pick them up and then, or, or they've gotten their homework done, you know, because they have access. Now it's more family time as opposed to getting home and then they're at work. Those are some of the things that I think set you apart as a unique school.
Lot of opportunities there.
Yeah, sure.
Any further discussion on this policy? Let's, let's don't carry it over to our consent agenda because Ms. Henry's not here. We'll give her the benefit of the doubt on this one. Just make it on our regular agenda item, Ms. Milhouse. Next item.
Okay. Next item is discussion action on scheduling a date for board evaluation improvement and evaluation tool. I work with Ms. Harrison on this. Would you like to do that?
They believe in the documents that you're sent. I, I went out and did some research and Dr. Oral might come and talk about it. TSBA actually has a base model that they have for subvaluation that comes with, actually as part of our, the structure with them, our membership in the organization. So and they actually will also tabulate the result. Am I correct in saying that the tabulation of the results is included also in our restructure? So, so they'll actually perform all of that by, now, they don't facilitate, that, that would be an extra cost. But we do have some things that are included in our membership with TSBA. So there, that would certainly be an advantage to using their, their base tool. Certainly if the board wants to add any additional items, but it seemed pretty comprehensive. It covers this whole community, you know, there's variety of subject matters. So one afternoon, looking through, reading different evaluations, things like that, it seems like it was the best route for us to at least go for the first year and, you know, see how it went. To then, you know, make tweaks or, you know, what something we're happy with and we can change it next year, those kinds of things.
Just how do you envision this work? What's the process?
From what I've, the information that I read about it was that you basically, you schedule, it has to, our policy says that we have to have a meeting in there. It's just, you know, the entire board is there. And the way it was, it was said was that if we, once we adopt the instrument, each member would fill out, you know, the questionnaire or whatever, send it to TSBA. And then the meeting would be scheduled to discuss the results and to go over the results and all of that after.
Okay, so you fill out the evaluation form privately.
Yes.
Submitted to Dr. Oral and he sends it to TSBA. And the TSBA compiles results and then we have a meeting with the representative from TSBA?
That part is, it costs extra.
Okay.
But the, but the summary of, like they wrote, you were written the summary of the results.
Okay, so we would go, so, so we don't have TSBA come in, we, we go through the results together at a, at a meeting when all of us are present. Is that how?
Yes, that's how they, that's how the research, like I said, it's done.
In my understanding is it's kind of the approach is based on almost kind of gap analysis between your priorities and how you think you're performing in different areas. So kind of figure it out if your, if your priority is, you know, instruction, that you feel like you don't get a lot of time and attention to instruction and that's an area that might be a conversation.
I was reading it and I just wondered, do we enter it based on what we, we think the board as a whole does or we ourselves do?
I ran it to me board as a whole because it says the board. So you may be great at something and I may be terrible.
Well, now, and then the second question is, when we get the results, do we, do we see we've got what or is that?
The way it was anonymous.
Okay. Because I could see that the answers might be a little different if it was an anonymous, I mean, just based on some of the questions.
I, I can send you the example of the one that I have pulled up that they had presented previously. Now, that's just done to a facilitator, but it would be the same kind of summary. So I, I'll send you what I have shown so you can just see what their summary looks like.
Any further discussion on this item?
So the thought would be, I understand from record that on Monday, you guys would decide whether or not to adopt the TSBA tool in their estimate. And if you did, then you would need also set a date to, you know, sort of be sent to you in that period of meeting.
Would we have to give, I don't see any reason why we have to set the date for the meeting on Monday.
They do have to.
Okay.
We just have to do this.
Because well, we, I think you're, you're not going to be here next week, so it might be beneficial that everybody present. Because picking dates is the hardest thing we do. So, okay. So very good. Any further discussion on this item?
No, just to add a little bit to Dr. Oral, you know, the gap analysis kind of really will help the board laser in focus more so on, you know, items to target. You have kind of your, you know, if it's communication, if it's classroom, you know, all the, the different things that, you know, the two periods, five periods, to set those goals to what the board wants emphasis placed on, you know. But that's honestly the goal, as far as the short term goal.
Any, any objections or any consent on? And Dr. Oral, he'll just go over these with Ms. Henry at some point. And if she has an objection, we can take them off the consent agenda. She was right. We'll carry it over to the consent agenda. Next item.
Next is discussion action on adopting annual agenda schedule. And also I want to recognize the policy committee here for the three this item and this one had pointed out that these are required by our policy. So, you know, that's the reason for bringing it before the time. What our policy says, the board will adopt an annual agenda schedule. And there is one posted online that you guys have received, Mrs. McCall, initially on, is it Williams?
I didn't, Frank, I don't know.
Frank, maybe.
That's one of the two.
Harrison and Ms. Milhouse. Williams and Harrison. Harrison and Ms. Milhouse and I have gone through and added the things that we think would be recurring kind of agenda items and also added sections of our policy that we reviewed each month. This is a great way to help, you know, help us set the agendas and help the executive committee set the usually just remind everybody what's coming out of kind of the timeline, so.
Any discussion on this item? The, the only concern that I have is I guess it'll be your job, Mr. Superintendent, to make sure we're on track with the agenda. I mean, it's, it's one more thing to, to keep up with. And does it require amending if we decide to carry something over next week? The following meeting?
I would say, well, in my opinion, I would say no, just because you have initially addressed it at the moment, or whatever that you indicated, only if it was a significant deviation from our, that kind of, let's say it was a policy item.
Okay.
Well, I, I feel like this is more of a guide than anything. It's, it's, it's a tool to help us because there are some things that are on here that tend to be that month. But there may be, there may be circumstances that
Right.
keep them from being, state can say we're not doing that report that month, you know.
Well, there may be a reason why, why you don't want to bring it up that month for you, you're waiting on a report or something to come in.
So I certainly hope this would be a, a way to ease our business about constrictly, you know, this is the way I see it, the way I see the spirit of policy.
Why don't we, for some reason, I, I can't pull it up right now. What does the policies, does the policy say shall adopt or may adopt or other laws? I can't pull it up for some reason right now.
The board shall adopt an annual planning calendar, starting, starting month by month actions required by law and those required to carry out the board's annual goals and objectives and the state of our education performance standards. In addition, the annual agenda book shall designate dates to monitor review designated sections of the board policy manual to evaluate the progress of programs for student achievement.
Do we do that in this? Why don't we continue to look at this? I don't, I don't see what we reference. Do you have a two with much at all?
I remember in the county, it was called the main, I have some.
Well, in what way did they do?
Well, so they, well, we don't have high school courses. They reference a frugal of high school courses, workforce, applications. Ninth grade pass fail report. So it's in, in Williamson County, they have, you know, more high school.
Certain things.
Yeah.
Well, you know, there's, there's tax book committee at one, right? They got that, that references sort of active in the program.
Any further discussion on this item? Here none. Let's move this over to our regular agenda. Next item.
All right, next we've got several policies. Four of these were based just explicitly on TSBA recommendations that were the result of changes to state law. The first from the line item transfer authority is two point two oh one. This is a request to add a line at the end of two point two oh one. Uh, this is a request to add a line at the end of 2.201, that says, "Transfer between major budget categories can be made within state-supervised grant and program budgets, provided the state-supervising authority or grant management has approved the transfers." And, uh, if I can explain that, there's, it's really dealing with one specific thing. Within I D E A, within special education, uh, instruction and instructional support are both considered major categories. So what the policy would say without this language is that if we need to move funds between instructional support and instruction, for, for whatever reason, uh, that we would have to bring that back to the board, and to the board commissioners to make that change. The, the difference between these state-supervised grant programs is that there are people in the state that are approving those changes, we can't make those changes without their permission. So, um, this would request basically an exception to that policy that says that this year, the only time I moved between major categories, which only happened a couple times, was before approval. This would say mainly in the interest of expediency that those changes could be made as long as the state approved that change.
Any discussion on this item?
Is, would there be objection to adding, um, just general language about notification to the board of, of that transfer at the next regular, or next, next bit, board meeting? And, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't have specific language, I'm just something, just gen, generally, just notification.
Or clearly no, uh-
Yes, at the next business meeting, the next board meeting, or however.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, since we have a proposed change to this policy, Dr. Oral, let's carry this over to our regular agenda. Next item.
Next item, uh, this is the first before TSBA recommended changes the procedure for brand and tenure, that is policy 5.117, and essentially, the state changed the, uh, the deadline to notify teachers that they would not be renewed, essentially, that their contract would not be renewed. So this has to do with when you let a teacher know that they are not coming back to, to that particular assignment. And the new law says that, um, the non-renewable teach, teacher not bringing a tenure must be done within five business days following the last instructional day for the school year. So, there's, this, this change, this one of those that changes frequently, uh, there was a point where it was before the end of the year, they decided that was inappropriate because it impacted the teacher's teaching, as it might if you fired them before they finished the school year. Uh, and then it was mid-June, I think, and then it was determined that that was too late, and to let teachers know what their situation was prior to that, and so this is the latest incarnation, which was within five business days following the last instructional day of the school year. Uh, this is one of those, there are not a lot of choice at all.
This is state law.
That's, that's the law, so we've amended policy a little bit.
Any, uh, further discussion on this item?
I've got a question about tenured teachers, did we have any that?
I read-
And for this past school year that-
This past school year, we did, incidentally, there were not any, they were either all tenured, or they were not yet ready to be tenured, so I believe we will, this year.
Good question. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none, any objection to moving this item over to consent agenda? Next item.
Next is 5.201, separation practices for non-tenured teachers, this is the exact same situation, it demands the language, um, that says that it would be notified within five business days following the last instructional day of the school.
And again, this is state mandated, correct. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, any objection to carrying this over to consent agenda? We'll carry it over to consent agenda. Next item.
Next item is 6.205, student assignments, uh, this adds language from, uh, an update to, uh, public acts of 2015, that talks about, uh, separating alleged victims of child sexual abuse from alleged perpetrators, um, within the school building. And this, reading this, this appears to be dealing with two students, if there's an allegation where there was sexual abuse between students, that they essentially, the parent can request that that student be reassigned if that allegation has been substantiated by the Department of Children's Services, adjudicated by a juvenile court, uh, or criminally charged, and also the alleged action has been had on, uh, under the supervision of care of the school. Again, this is state law, so we've had the language.
Any discussion on this item?
So, when I first read it, I do have a question, when I first read it, it said the principal shall separate, and then the second sentence talks about at the request of the parent, so is it at the request of the parent, or is the principal just shall?
I think at the request of the parent, the principal shall, is how I would interpret it.
Yeah, I, I had to read it a number of times to come to that conclusion, as well, the two sentences do seem to be related, I can hardly do it again.
It, it's, I don't think it's written very well, truthfully, but-
Yeah.
-we don't have that responsibility or the power to edit it, so-
Yeah.
Kind of is what it is, so to speak.
It, it just reads like it could go either way, so-
Yeah, well, I, I think the first sentence is, and great, I think the first sentence is very clear, but then the second sentence seems to-
Yes, undermined the first one.
Create a lot of doubt about what the first sentence meant.
Right.
Again, this-
Okay, that's what my question had, is, they seem to conflict with each other.
Any, uh, further discussion on this item? Hearing none, any objection to moving this over to consent agenda? All right, without objection, this item is carried over. Next item.
And the last one is, uh, amendment to policy 6.405, it has to do with medicines, and this adds a section on students with pancreatic insufficiency or systemic fibrosis, and essentially says that, uh, students in those situations, if they have, um, appropriate documentation, they can self-manage their prescribed medication.
Again, this is state's law, correct.
I, I will say, this policy did have, like, I believe, a, a section that we had already previously, that, uh, that TSBA updated, just where it says in certain language, only if the board, or is that part of the, yeah, I think only create, or adopted the policy originally, that was structured, but it just didn't update it in the policy.
Thank you.
I'd be curious, you know, that's very specific, I wonder what that is based on, to say specifically pancreatic or systemic fibrosis. And does that open the door to other things?
Great question for a T L N, maybe I'll stay with that.
Let's talk to that person.
Mr. Wright?
Did you make that note, by the way?
It is very specific, it's odd.
That's my homework assignment, my summer assignment.
Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, any objection to moving this over to consent agenda? Without objection, we'll move this item over to the consent agenda. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on school support organization approvals. All right, so essentially, um, at the, uh, prompting of the policy committee that pointed out that the, um, school support organizations are supposed to have a formal, um, agreement with the school system, we requested that Chris Patterson's office come up with an agreement that would kind of meet that standard, just to clarify, there are only two approved school support organizations, um, that, that, that have been approved by Lakeland School System, and when I say they've been approved, they've been approved through their submission of the required documents that the state requires. So, they have met the, um, they have met the requirement that the state can be approved, they have permission with the superintendent or the school board, and those are Lakeland Education Foundation and Lakeland PDA. What our policy says is that there should also be a, a formal agreement, so, uh, Mr. Patterson's office came up with that, and that's, uh, what it was posted now, and-
Any, any discussion on this item?
I, I, I have a thought. Where is Mr. Price?
He's out of town. And we have, we have, we actually have somebody way smarter than him here, because I can go on the record.
Yeah. He changed his profile picture on Facebook, and was really giving a hard time about it, and I think that's maybe just, sorry, not the show.
Um, any further discussion on this item? I, I have a question, or a thought, I guess, um, it occurred to me as I was reading this, that I don't know that we have any, I don't know that we have these organizations, or any organization signed something that says they'll be responsible for any damage to the property while, while they're conducting business on there. I think that would be an easy line to, maybe paragraph number two, um-
I believe our policy states that will indemnify, that the-
Well, indemnifying hold harmless are, are, can be different than damage to the property. I just think to clarify, it would, it'd eliminate any possible confusion, I think. But I, I will probably make a motion to amend that next week, just, just for clarification purposes.
Would it be separate, I mean, if the board would have a consensus, if we can get an item so that it was prepared for next week?
Yeah, I, we could probably get a, Ms. Shank could probably, it does-
It would be a change.
And have, and have a clean copy next week.
Yeah.
Dr. Oral, are you asking now? Is that kind of a general consensus that we agree?
Yeah, I was saying, rather than we make a motion next week, we could bring an updated copy that had that language.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, if we want to go ahead and do that.
Okay. Any further, yes?
No, I would just like, I know you talked about the, the name of the property, but specifically, is the agreement indemnified the board, or any actions that was-
In, in, in paragraph two, it does say, it says, "The support organization agrees to identify hold harmless to Lakeland Board of Education." You know, and you might can make an argument that that would-
Right.
If there were damages to the property, it might fall under that language as well, but I think just to clarify, it's not a big deal.
And so that we would be able to use this as a standard for any school support organizations that may arise in future?
Yeah, we just, we would update, we would make this part of the packet, we'd ask them to submit, um, annually, and bring these back before the board for board approval. And in that case, if there, if there are additional, you know, booster clubs or groups that, um, may be created out of the, um, middle school, you know, for example, a basketball booster club, that's something that you have to go out and agree with the board and kind of formalize. Already on our website, we have a list of, that's required by basketball, and that's what the approved ones are, and just sort of everybody's information. Basically, what it says is, if you're not one of those two groups, you are not supposed to be fundraising or soliciting or really doing anything on math, or playing this system, or anything else.
So we'll carry this item over to our regular agenda for next week. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on the ethics committee, um, again, this was, this is another policy reference, it says in the event that there was an appeal, um, that the board shall maintain a list of hearing officers, um, if there's specifically a tenure appeal, um, and-
Two different, two different things, you're getting ahead of yourself. Hearing officer-
Oh, I'm sorry, I did, you're right, you're right, excuse me.
The ethics committee is, everybody's waiting for a meeting, nominate committee, I think our policy says we're supposed to have a committee, three, two of those members are supposed to be board members, and the third can be anyone, um, and I'm, my nomination, my recommended nomination to the, subject to approval of the board, I would like to nominate Ms. Hale and Ms. Henry to serve as our board liaisons on the committee, and then Wesley Wright to be the third party. And any, any discussion on, on this item? Hearing, hearing none, we won't carry, this will be our regular agenda item, uh, for the approval of nominations. Ms. Hale and Will is, uh, Ms. Henry's not even here, so-
I'm not here to get help, man.
All right.
Well, then, uh, do you have a question, I mean, are seeming they would elect their own chair, or what?
It would be internal, that'd be a decision of the ethics committee. And they, they'd all have to agree to serve, but if for some reason one of them doesn't agree to serve, we'd come back with a new nomination.
So there'd be total of three?
Total of three.
And it's a one-year?
One-year commitment.
And I love everybody that would be on it, but what was the, uh, thinking about having two board members in the system?
Our, our policy requires us to have two board members, and then the third can be, like, I, I think it was just to-
That'd be a great idea.
Somebody who doesn't serve. Next item.
And I apologize for the company, next item is the, uh, hearing officer selection, so we're required to maintain a list of hearing officers in case of a, a tenure appeal or dismissal of appeal, and, uh, again, Chris Patterson did some research on that, and has come up with two names that were, I believe both, I know one, were on the TSBA list, but people that were appropriate to serve as hearing officers, and they are Sam Jackson and Latasha Dexter, and we feel like it's appropriate, I, I feel like it's appropriate for our size, and the two would be inadequate, and would, um, problem with that business that they have, um, but they're submitting those two names, and they both agreed to do it, and they, board approval, they both had experience as hearing officers, um, and I can, I can start sending more information out to you.
Where are the, let me, here, I see a year ago.
Um, one of them works for the University of, Latasha Dexter works for the University of Memphis now, Sam Jackson.
Like he was on a train, or he was in Middle Tennessee.
He's out of town, yeah.
Good.
So they come in, you know, there's obviously advantages with that, and somebody that's not sure, sure that they've been working with those, and that, right?
And so they have, they do have experience, and, I guess, a lot of just TSBA, I guess, and things, but-
I know, I know that Sam Jackson, because I remember that, Sam Jackson, was recommended by TSBA, and he'd been, he's been-
Well, and I, and I know the thought of this texture was, so that makes, okay.
Is there some sort of certification, or, I mean, obviously, some sort of accreditation process, that says certain individuals are-
Actually, I, I don't know what TSBA's vetting, um, you know, process is, but our policy does not state it, or associate that policy.
Do you have, like, resume, or just information, not, not resume, just general information, whatever you can send to us?
And you could always add more people to it, I mean, it's a list, so it's not, if we decide that we want to add, you know, three more folks, we can.
It's like a mediator list.
Exactly.
Those you can choose.
Exactly.
Both parties have to agree to this.
We'll just carry this over to our regular agenda, I have some search list and questions and information on that. Next item.
Next item is discussion action on the differentiated pay plan and salary schedule. Um, this is a requirement of the state, we did this last year, um, where the board approved the differentiated pay plan, um, because probably, remember, we're required to have some differentiation in terms of our, the opportunities to pay teachers differently, that's, that's either merit-based, or achievement-based, or, you know, results-based, and so we, we changed it last year, we had a master teacher and a learning coach, this year we want to keep the master teacher, but one of the changes that, um, this Hughes, along with Lachar, recommended, was to put together a principal's leadership team, and there would be some responsibilities of being on that team, and also a stipend associated with being on that team, and part of the goal is to give high-performing teachers opportunities to both pay more money, but also enhance their, again, leadership skills and leadership opportunities in the building. Um, on a related note, you also have to turn in the salary schedule, I want to give some background here, um, when we became our own system, one of the understandings of our own systems was that we needed to roll forward with everything that the teachers had under the last year of Shelby County Schools. So, um, one of the things that the teachers had under the last year of Shelby County Schools was a single-lane salary schedule that does not, uh, recognize advanced degrees, so basically, all the teachers, the new teachers that were hired after a certain age would all be paid on the same, kind of, column, you know, they would step, step up year to year, but not step over if they had advanced degrees. Um, now, the, you know, the flip side of that is that Shelby County Schools, and now each of the municipal systems pays teachers even on the bachelor lane much higher than any of the surrounding communities, uh, pretty significantly, so that even a, a first-year teacher with a bachelor, on the bachelor's lane, would pay more than maybe a fifth-years teacher in the master's lane at some other school system. However, what we've decided that, that we would like to recommend is to take this year and put together a, a revised strategic compensation plan, and would essentially, for this next year, we're going to stick with the same salary schedule that we used, but work with the teachers and the administration, and try to put together some kind of merit or achievement-based system that might even include recognition for advanced degrees, depending on what the feedback is. that might even include recognition for advanced degrees, depending on what the feedback is from the group, as part of kind of an overhaul of the salary schedule. We didn't want it to be arbitrary, say, we're just going to do what Shelby County did. You know, we could have just gone back to the Shelby County step-up lanes, but instead of doing that, and then maybe coming back with something else, we wanted to just kind of sit tight for this year, and feel like, you know, we can, we should. And then in time for the sixteen, seventeen school year, have a more comprehensive strategic compensation plan. I think everybody knows it is increasingly dependent of the other school systems, it's, you know, there are challenges to track and retain it. We want to have a compensation plan that makes sense, that is motivating the teachers, that, you know, recognizes the things that we value as a school system. I want to take some time to put that together and do it right, so. But what I'm asking you to approve this year is the salary schedule that we had last year, and then the differentiated pay plan that has the other base.
Any discussion on this item? Ms. Hale.
Why do you think they made it that single ring and took out all the advanced degree? Because to me, of all the professions, a teacher should be, I think, encouraged to advance their education. It was, I mean, with only having the one paper for a bachelor's, it's not, it's basically saying, all right, it's, you don't need to get your degree, you're going to make the same thing anyway, so don't worry about it.
Right.
And so, I mean, that just seems weird.
I, I can tell you why I think they did that. Don't read this, this is what I think necessarily, but, you know, there, there was a movement, and some of this had to do with Race at the Top. There was a big move from Race at the Top to stop basically awarding degrees, because there is some research, and again, research can go in the way, that says, you know, teachers with advanced degrees don't necessarily get better results from their students. So the situation that administrators were finding is you may have two teachers that have actually taught each other, this one's getting killer results from their students, and is making ten thousand dollars less than this one, who's getting no results, but happens to have a degree. They also found that they were paying teachers for degrees that weren't even in that subject area. So you may have a science teacher that has a degree in administration, that's not really helping to teach science, but they're making seven thousand dollars more a year than this teacher that's a really great teacher. So I think the, the emphasis was, let's come up with a system that recognizes the great teachers and pays them more, and not necessarily something as arbitrary as whether or not you have a degree. So that, that's how it was presented. I agree with the frustration that I feel you saying, is that it kind of stops the motivation. We want teachers to continue to learn, to continue to be, develop themselves and educate themselves. We just have to figure out what that balance is, and that's what I hope we can spend the next year doing. Because I'm not against compensating teachers for advanced degrees, but I do see the problems in just saying, if you got a degree, you make extra money. Because that, that also seems unfair in a way. So we got to figure out where that.
Have you got, you know, part of their evaluation would also.
There are a lot of, there are a lot of models out there, there's not a magic bullet, for sure. There are a lot of different ways, they all, at the, at the end of the day, they all require a lot of communication and a lot of high-end, and a lot of really thoughtful implementation. So, you know, I look forward to kind of sharing and even involving the board in that process.
Do school systems in the back of Shelby County School, do they help compensate for tuition?
No, no.
But, but that is an option. There are options that say if you earn a degree, you know, we will pay you this much for this long, you know, maybe for, maybe it's not forever.
Right, that's kind of where I would say that was.
That's one of the corporate kind of model.
So is it possible to have, like, it's talking about support there for continuing education? I mean, because you do, you don't have just degrees, you also have certifications, things like that, where is there, is there plans, like, where you could have, you know, help with continuing the education or avenues like that? But also performance-based, where you can merit it to.
There's some really fascinating kind of models where, you know, so for example, the current, we have eighteen steps right now. There are models with seventy-five steps and a hundred twenty-five steps. And it's almost like a likening to a board game, but if you have an advanced degree, instead of we're going to pay you more every year, we're going to move you ahead on the steps. So you'll always be five years ahead of where you were because you got the advanced degree, if that makes sense.
No, corporate, actually, they have some things like that, too. You know, you get a year or two, whatever, towards your next A level or position or whatever, so based on the degree. So it helps you, but it doesn't necessarily, you know, it moves you along the direction.
You can, you can move up five steps, and then if you got excellent T-boss scores, maybe you get another bump. But if you don't get excellent T-boss scores, maybe you stay there on that. You know, there's just a lot of different models to look at, so look forward to getting teacher inputs.
Not just a raise because you got the corporate.
Any further discussion on this item? And to clarify, the only thing that's before us right now is that basically the same salary structure as last year, with the exception of the two modifications. Are we comfortable with carrying that to the consent item, consent edition? No objection, we'll move that over to the consent agenda. Is there any other businesses that needs to come before the board? Here, none, any announcements? Can I get a motion to the adjourn? Second, all favor? Opposed? We are adjourned.